Good evening, everyone. I'll put this committee of the whole meeting to order here in council chambers at 6:00 P.M. Mr. Schmidt is joining us just a few minutes late, and Mr. McNamara will not be with us this evening, so we do have a quorum. But there's no remote electronic attendance, so we'll start with our oaths of office. Chief?
All right, great. Well, thank you very much, Mayor. These are always really fun times as a police chief to recognize the hard work of fellow officers in the Moline Police Department and tell you how proud you should be of the men and women that work at the Moline Police Department. I know I am. And this is a great opportunity to make a couple of promotions, so I appreciate the time today. First up, I'd like to introduce you to Andrew Raya. He is a seasoned law enforcement professional with a distinguished career spanning 15 years. He's a proud native of Moline, graduated Moline High School, and pursued higher education at Western Illinois University right here at our Quad Cities campus, where he earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Andrew is a first-generation Mexican-American with proud immigrant parents who came to Moline for a better life, for their family and their children. Andrew certainly has made them proud of their decision to move here to Moline. Andrew's fluent in Spanish and has added vital bilingual skills to our department to help serve our Hispanic community in various roles throughout his career in Moline. Deputy Chief Raya is a 2022 graduate of the FBI National Academy, Class 282, a prestigious law enforcement 10-week executive management program held in Quantico, Virginia. Andrew began his career on patrol, making a significant impact in the Florciante neighborhood. His exemplary performance led to assignments with the Illinois State Police Quantices Metropolitan Enforcement Group, where he served as an undercover narcotics detective and later with an assignment with the Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Agency. Andrew was promoted as sergeant in 2017 and returned to patrol as a first-line supervisor. In 2018, he transitioned to roles as the sergeant overseeing the community policing unit. In 2020, Andrew was promoted to the rank of lieutenant and returned to the patrol division as the division commander. In 2021, he was appointed commander of the role of Criminal Investigation Division, overseeing the juvenile unit, adult unit, gun unit, street crimes unit, and crime prevention unit. Beyond his departmental duties, Andrew has played pivotal roles in various specialized units outside of the department, including since 2020, serving as a supervisor for the Rock Island County Integrity Task Force, contributing efforts aimed at maintaining integrity and professionalism within the law enforcement community. Additionally, he served as the crisis containment unit tactical commander from 2016 to 2021, demonstrating his experience as a team leader and tactical commander in high-pressure situations. Last month, Andrew went through a rigorous process for evaluation for the position of deputy chief. I was joined by Moline Police Deputy Chief Steve Van Hyzen, Rock Island Police Chief Rich Landy, and retired Davenport Police Chief Paul Sikorsky, as well as our Human Resources Department Director Leah Miller, in the evaluation of the candidates. We were all impressed with his performance, leading me to select Andrew as the next deputy chief for the Moline Police Department. Andrew is certainly proud. His family are here. There's a lot of family members here today, including his wife Alyssa, who is here, his two children, Olivia, six, and Oscar, three. His dad, Arturo, is here, Kelly and Dale, in-laws Samantha and Santana, his sisters, and Nick, his brother-in-law. So, Mayor, I'd be honored if you would afford to read the oath of office.
(mimicking a child crying)
This one's for you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Andrew Raya.
I, Andrew Raya.
Having been duly appointed.
Have been duly appointed.
To the rank of deputy chief of the police department.
To the rank of deputy chief of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Applicable to police administration.
Applicable to police administration.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the rank of deputy chief of the police department.
Of the rank of deputy chief of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
(applause) And then I would invite his dad, Arturo, to come forward for the ceremony of pinning on his badge. Okay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Proud of you. I would invite members of Andrew's family to come forward, take some pictures, do Christmas card photos here. Come on, real quick. Let's go, real quick. You're fine, you're fine. Plenty of time. They get paid by the hour.
Really?
How about Dad? Your dad, come on. Mayor, if I could, have just another moment to promote the next individual, Jason Smith. If you could come forward. Sorry if anybody wants to squeeze in. You got all your family in? All right, great. Well, with the promotion of Lieutenant Andrew Raya to the position of deputy chief, that leaves a vacancy at the rank of lieutenant. Jason Smith has been employed with the Moline Police Department for 18 years and has over 20 years of law enforcement experience. Jason started his law enforcement career enlisting in the United States Army as a military police officer in 2002 and served in the Iraq War, earning multiple awards and citations to include the Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal and the 89th Military Police Brigade Combat Patch. Jason started his civilian law enforcement career at the Rock Island Arsenal Police Department in 2004 and was hired by the Moline Police Department in 2006. Jason graduated from the Eastern Gateway Community College with an associate's degree in applied science and criminal justice, is currently enrolled in Western Illinois University, seeking a bachelor's degree in law enforcement administration. He is a 2023 graduate of the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command, Class 555, a prestigious 10-week police management course preparing leaders for executive-level positions. Currently, Lieutenant Smith is assigned as the Special Investigations Group Supervisor and interim Criminal Investigations Bureau Commander. He previously has held assignments to include a juvenile detective, street crimes detective, special federal officer, assigned to the FBI Gang Task Force, community policing officer in the Florciante Office, which I might add probably is his most proud assignment that he cherishes, field training officer, crisis containment, team member and team leader, and has been the Fraternal Order of Police Union President since 2022. During his off-duty hours, Jason coaches wrestling and softball and enjoys spending time with family and friends. Lieutenant Smith is joined today by his wife Teresa, children Kai, Kinley, and Quinn, and numerous family and friends, who include his sister Jamie and niece Crystal, his mom Donna, his dad Graham, and his mother-in-law Janet. So, Mayor, would you do me the honor and administer the oath of office?
This one's for you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Jason Smith.
I, Jason Smith.
Having been duly appointed.
Have been duly appointed.
To the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
To the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
That I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
Will strictly adhere to the compiled statutes of the state of Illinois.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
The Moline Code of Ordinances.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
And any Illinois rules of professional conduct.
Applicable to police administration.
Applicable to police administration.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
Of the rank of lieutenant of the police department.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith. (applause) This one's for you. And do you have junior? (inaudible)
I do, I do.
Who do you? (inaudible)
Yours?
In the back?
Yes.
Right, we've got one.
The insignia for the rank of lieutenant is a single gold bar. I'd invite your wife Teresa to come forward, ceremony to pin on your lieutenant badge. (applause)
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Lieutenant? And then invite your family to come forward and case for us.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Chief, and thanks for all you're doing to lead that department and continue to find good leadership among your ranks. We'll be continuing with item 4.1, Junior Achievement BizTown Presentation. Dougal Nelson, President and CEO of Junior Achievement of the Heartland.
Okay. Well, thank you. Lost the clicker already. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council and City Administration, and for the police force, for what you guys do. Thank you very much, Chief. Is Dave around with the clicker? It disappeared.
Check the shelf.
Oh, here it is. Never mind. Yeah, so, real quick, just a couple things about Junior Achievement, and then we'll jump into the project in whole. You know, really, JA is the world's largest organization dedicated to giving kids the skill sets and the mindsets to build thriving communities like Moline, Illinois. I know a couple council members have volunteered before. I thank you for that. It's really important that we get in front of our kids today and really show them the way. We used to talk a lot about being college and career-ready, college and life-ready, but now we talk about being career and life-ready, right? Not every kid needs to go to college to be successful. Trust me, I believe in higher education, but it just isn't for everybody, right? Today, we want to talk a little bit about the benefits of Junior Achievement in our community. You know, we really teach on three pillars: financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and work and career readiness. We think those three pillars are vital to a student's success. We really encourage that financial freedom, right? When kids understand what financial freedom means, they can really grow and prosper and grow more. JA alumni report that they make 20% higher income than students that did not have Junior Achievement. That's pretty phenomenal in my book. You know, but I talked about it earlier. I mean, what if every kid went to college? What would our community look like, right? We'd have a lot of doctors and lawyers and engineers and brilliant city minds, but we have people that work in the streets department. We have people on the park and rec board. We have folks out, you know, in our community doing those jobs that are so necessary. But the big news, and I think that's what we're here for today, is talk about the new JA Inspiration Center. 25 years ago, we opened up a facility in downtown Davenport. We were the third Junior Achievement in the country to pilot JA BizTown. At the time, it was called Exchange City, if you remember that. There's a lot of things that happened at BizTown. The lease on that property up, the lease on the property in Davenport is up this year. So, we looked really hard, and we went around and we talked to a lot of different people in a lot of different cities, and I'm happy to say that when Vibrant bought the old Sam's Club down on John Deere Road, they offered us 13,000 square feet at a dollar a year. That included all the security, the maintenance, the internet, the parking, the rent. Just a great deal for us, but we have to raise 3.25 million to build that out. But anyway, that's not what we're here to talk about today. We're here to talk about City Hall. At BizTown, if you can imagine this, a fifth grader goes to BizTown and they take out a business loan to run their business for the day. We have a credit union there. We have a factory. We have a transportation area. We have a distribution area. We have a marketing business there at BizTown. We have a business office. We have philanthropy there. It's like walking down Main Street, USA, right? All these buildings and all these storefronts these kids run. So, they take out a business loan as a fifth grader, and they have to pay that back, and they do that by selling goods and services. And then when they're on their break, they become consumers, and they're buying goods and services. So, they really get to understand how the economy flows around the city. But at the center of our community, and the center of every community, is City Hall, right? City Hall drives economic development. I always like to tell people that I think we're the economic incubator in Moline. We really want, we want kids to live here and grow here and stay here. The school district in Moline is doing a phenomenal job with some programs, but at the end of the day, we're thrilled to talk to you about City Hall and what the city of Moline can do in that space. We teach a lot of lessons at City Hall, right? Kids learn how to vote. They'll vote a mayor in, and the mayor will run the city for the day. We have a city attorney. We have a parks and rec director. There's a public works director there, and they do a lot of things in the city. You'll notice on that screen, you see in the upper right-hand corner, when kids walk into BizTown, that's going to look like the 74 Bridge. So, the students will vote on a referendum to light that bridge in their school colors. We think that's pretty cool. They'll also be responsible for maintaining the road that goes through BizTown. We'll go back one more. You can see on that bottom floor plan, there's a road that goes all the way through BizTown. So, it's going to look like grass, and it's going to look like concrete. So, we're going to be dependent on students to learn about taxes and infrastructure, and why those are so important for our roads and our highways, for our police and our fire. I'll tell a quick anecdotal story about a young man that was at BizTown, and we were talking about taxes and where they went, and he started crying. And someone said, "What's wrong?" And he said, "Well, my mom doesn't work." And he said, "We don't pay taxes, so if my house catches on fire, the fire department isn't going to come." Folks, that's real life. Kids only know what they know, right? We've got to teach kids that our community believes in them. I mentioned there's a philanthropy. The tree is going to be called the giving tree. Kids are going to learn about philanthropy and how important it is to commit to their community. With City Hall again, I mean, really, when we talk about taxes and we talk about goods and services and how the economy works in the free enterprise system, this is a conceptual drawing of what BizTown might look like at the new facility. You can see the seal is in the center there for the city of Moline. It's not real visible, but just wanted to kind of give you an idea what that might look like. There'll be a large monitor above City Hall when the mayor gives their remarks and talks to the, talks to the city about it. We'll see things up on the screen. The inside of City Hall, we have a lot of ideas, but we would really depend on the city to come back to us and talk about their ideas. We thought it'd be cool if we could highlight all the different jobs that happen in the city, right? Kids only know what they know again, right? They don't know about, you know, if you ask your kid, "Who owns the library?", what do you think they're going to tell you? They probably don't know, you know, that the city runs that library, right? And they can work for the city, and they can work in that library. So, there's a lot going on there. That back wall, you'll see Moline on there. That's just a conceptual drawing of what that back wall might look like to highlight the city. There's another wall on the right-hand side. Take Time to Discover, Support, Live, that can talk about your tourism piece if you'd like. It's completely up to you how we design this. I think it's a pretty easy lift for the city. 5,000 students in the first year, 100% of Moline fifth graders in the building. It's a $3.25 million investment that Junior Achievement is willing to make in our city. The first-year build-out cost for the city is $7,500. That includes all the furniture, the computers, the design, the wall wraps, the facade. That's all included in that first $7,500 for the first year only. After that, we're asking for an annual investment of $10,000 a year. That helps us just to keep the sustainability of our building there and keep the kids coming. So, the total investment over a three-year period is $37,500. We respectfully ask the city to engage in this project with us. We're excited about it. I know I spoke to a couple of you, and you're excited about it too, so I don't know if there's any questions or comments or anyone would like to make.
Do you count some members? Yes, Mr. Macias.
Thank you. As a volunteer for JA, I've done it for, this will be my 10th year here at Lincoln Irving, and I can really firsthand attest how the rigor of the programs. I do fifth grade, and even I have learned a lot from the program, but just there's so much that the kids need to be exposed to when it comes to careers, and in my opinion, it just makes sense that the municipal side of it is also a piece that they need to learn about. So, yeah, I myself am a volunteer of JA, for the record, and see the value in the organization.
Thank you.
I might just add to that, that Alvaro was named our outstanding volunteer last year, and it's because of his work to make our curriculum bilingual. And so, when we looked at the new facility and we start talking about that, this will be a bilingual facility as well. So, thank you, Alvaro, for your work.
Can I suggest you think trilingual at some point, because we have, French is the other language that is predominant in our school district, although there are over 60 languages spoken.
Yeah, it's crazy.
So, just a point of information, Mr. Macias.
We appreciate that.
I just wanted to mention that all four of my kids went through JA and BizTown, and they still remember the jobs that they had. They had really great experiences, and I am excited that you are coming to Moline. So, thank you.
Sure. You know, as I've traveled around the country now and looked at different facilities and tried to model off of those, I always feel like when I come back home, I walked into a basement somewhere, but this new facility is really state-of-the-art. It's not your father's JA anymore, and it's very, we're not just moving it from one place to the next. It'll be a much more immersive, experiential journey for the kids when they get there. Thank you, Anna.
So, Timmy?
My mother used to work at JA and was running, helped run BizTown, and she talked about it endlessly. I just, I think teaching kids about civic engagement at a young age plants a seed, and one of the issues that we run into is things are happening that people are not engaged, so they don't know.
Right.
And this is teaching kids to ask the questions early on, so that a more informed citizenry is going to help us make the best decisions. And so, I just think all of these things are working together.
I appreciate that, Matt. Thanks for the words.
I heard you use the term economic driver and economic development, and I wanted to offer to the council members that as we've been involved in conversations about community economic development, one of the things we've noticed is the need for new investors, right? The new investors in the projects, especially the residential projects that we have, that education toward philanthropy, toward business and investment, we have to start somewhere, and I think JA is the best partner we have in terms of introducing all children in the schools to that, what it takes to do that, and of course, the jobs, et cetera, that you talk about is important. But that's a global piece of this that I wanted to make sure I shared, because that is a significant need we see, and it's a generational issue, right?
Absolutely.
If your parents weren't able to do that kind of thing, you might not even know that that's a part of your community that's needed.
Yeah, we see that a lot, Mayor, that the kids, not every kid gets it at home, right? And sometimes they don't get all the information they need either, but thank you.
Mr. Smith?
My question is, I think, more toward our staff and saying, if we're interested in moving forward with this, what's the appropriate action this evening?
I would say if there's a general consensus to proceed forward at the request of Junior Achievement, then I have an agreement that I have reviewed and would bring that forward at the next city council meeting to make the commitment.
The new facility will open in October of this year. In fact, it looks like October 14th, so put that on your calendar, right?
And I think it's a good investment, hopefully.
I prefer my consensus.
I would concur.
And, you know, the only question I have, which again, kind to our staff, is where's that going to fit in our budget? How are we going to move that through? But...
Sure, we'll move it through. We can make that happen.
That's what, we have been using our contingency dollars, you know, as opposed to shifting it from some other pot.
We have.
I don't want to speak for the staff, but I imagine that amount of money is the kind of thing we've used contingency for.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nelson.
Well, thank you for having me. I really appreciate you taking the time, and above all, I appreciate your service to our community. It's a, it's a, sometimes it can be a thankless job, I understand that, so thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
And before I close out that item, if there, are there any detractors from Mr. Vitas bringing this back to us? This point, okay. Well, we'll look for it on a future council agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to our proclamation. The first is a proclamation for progressive action for the common good to declare April 2024 as Earth Month, and I believe PJ Slobodan is with us this evening. Hi.
I'm not PJ. She's unable to attend, and I'm truly not.
Okay. Did you want to come up and say anything about this?
No, we're just appreciative. All the cities in the past have done this. This is our corporate fifth-year.
All right. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22nd, 1970, with the goal of inspiring and appreciation of our nation's natural resources through conservation and protection, and whereas the celebration of this day marks an annual review and commitment to the principles of that first Earth Day, and whereas Earth Day marks a renewed commitment to environmental stewardship and to implementation of sustainability efforts, and whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as environmental degradation, global health issues, climate change, food and water shortages, and whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through education, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns, and whereas the city of Moline celebrates Earth Day by extending it to the month of April in recognition of the commitment to environmental stewardship, and whereas the city of Moline residents are encouraged to implement practices designed to preserve and protect our environment and shape the future of our environmental security, now therefore I, Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Earth Month, and the city of Moline, Illinois, encourage all residents to join in this observance." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we can pass that down, so you can take that proclamation with you. Our second proclamation is from the Quad City Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO, to declare the week of April 15th through April 19th, 2024 as National Work Zone Safety Week. The proclamation reads, "Whereas highway and street construction work, as well as repairs to roadways, are often completed while the roadways are open to traffic, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day, and whereas public works, law enforcement, firefighters, EMTs, and other emergency personnel put themselves in harm's way on the roads each day during the performance of their duties, and whereas workers diligently..." And whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as environmental degradation, global health issues, climate change, food and water shortages. And whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through education, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns. And whereas the City of Moline celebrates Earth Day by extending it to the month of April in recognition of the commitment to environmental stewardship. And whereas the City of Moline residents are encouraged to implement practices designed to preserve and protect our environment and shape the future of our environmental security. Now therefore, I Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Earth Month. And the City, City of Moline, Illinois encourage all residents to join in this observance. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we can pass that down, so you can take that proclamation with you. Our second proclamation is from Quad City Federation of Labor, AFL-CIO, to declare the week of April 15th through April 19th, 2024 as National Work Zone Safety Week. The proclamation reads, whereas highway and street construction work as well as repairs to roadways are often completed while the roadways are open to traffic, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day. And whereas public works, law enforcement, firefighters, EMTs, and other emergency personnel put themselves in harm's way on the roads each day during the performance of their duties. And whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild, and maintain roadways so that motorists can safely and efficiently travel. And whereas accidents can be prevented by setting aside distractions, using extra caution, reducing speed, and giving work zones your undivided attention while monitoring. And whereas the City of Moline is dedicated to ensuring the safety of workers, motorists, passengers, bicyclists, and pedestrians while in work zones. And whereas the City of Moline also reminds motorists that hands-on use of cell phones as well as sending, reading, or composing electronic messages while driving is unsafe for everyone, and that motorists should slow down and change lanes if possible when approaching an emergency construction or maintenance vehicle that is stationary and/or displaying flashing lights. Now therefore, I Sangitha Raiapati, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim the week of April 15th through 19th, 2024 as National Work Zone Awareness Week. Thank you very much. I don't believe there's anyone here from this organization this evening, so we will make sure they get that. Thank you. Um, is there any public comment this evening, Chief?
Diane Moore?
Yes, thank you. I think you added another row.
And you know that Chief will be timing it at three minutes.
Okay. Um, well, the first thing I wanted to talk to you about is the open meeting policy that should be upheld by all meetings being held at the City Hall. I came, um, in March to a planned commission meeting. I got here late. It was 5:15. The meeting was still going and the store was locked and I could not get in. And people, um, not everybody is free at 4 o'clock or 4:30 or 5. In my case, yes, I could've made 4 except I had a sick dog and had to go to the vets taking him home and I made it by 5:15. And I know the meeting was still going. I tried to text somebody up here to come down and let me in. It didn't happen. Um, I know you don't wanna have the building open, but at the same time, you have to have it open to people who wanna come. And really, 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock is a hard time for a lot of people who are working to get to anyway. I think that's another concern I've always had. So, that is my concern that you are not really following an open meeting policy. And I just wanna point that out. The another, the other one is, have we eliminated, uh, the Moline Center, um, program for the City of Moline? Cause I saw that as something that you are talking about or voting on. And so I had no idea that that was going on and maybe it has changed in some ways.
If you stay for the cow, the, um, committee of the whole, I believe Mr. Marcy will explain that.
It'll explain, be explained.
It's coming from them.
Okay.
Just so you know, it's not something the city is
Okay. Thank you very much.
Proposing. Thank you. All right.
Jeff Dismer?
Okay.
Hello. Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of city council, and members of, uh, city staff. Um, my name's Jeff Dismer. I am Chair of the Moline Public Art Commission. Uh, and this evening on your agenda, you have an item, uh, in a program that, uh, we are endorsing and putting forth to you for the, uh, the, uh, Public Art Sculpture Program. Um, City of Moline has participated in the program for six years, uh, initially in 2007 and eight, and then from 2020 through the present time. Uh, Public Art Commission was formed about two and a half years ago and we picked up, uh, that as, uh, uh, last year and we placed four sculptures, uh, throughout the City of Moline. Um, this year we seek to evolve our approach to concentrate our efforts on creating a sculpture walk in the downtown along 5th Avenue. Uh, we picked five sites along 5th Avenue from 13th through 19th intersections and that's a part of your packet to review. We feel, our Public Art Commission feels a strategic placement allows for the city to have a more identifiable, walkable public sculpture walk. Uh, we envision a corridor become more vibrant with art and culture and community and enrich cities' identity and, uh, foster economic revitalization. Uh, we feel this, uh, works with the, uh, the downtown and our commission is excited to endorse this. Um, we also have, uh, this program is done in conjunction with Quad City Arts to facilitate, uh, and we have selected six sculptures, uh, that we feel are outstanding and, uh, you'll review those this evening. Uh, in marketing a public sculpture program, Quad City Arts also works in partnership with Visit Quad Cities, uh, and, uh, to add sculptures to the public art mapping through Visit Quad Cities. Uh, they promote public art trail and incentivize the public to check out these locations with monetary prizes that will, uh, further drive people to walk past businesses and storefronts. And as City of Moline, uh, uh, by supporting the sculpture walk, uh, we can continue to pave the way for more pub, the public spaces that reflect who we are as a community. And I thank you very much for supporting the arts and look forward to hearing your comments.
Thank you.
Heather Calvert?
Good evening. My name's Heather Calvert. I'm the Executive Director at Butterworth Center in Dear Wyman House and here this evening to speak in favor of your agenda item 8.2, the landmarking status for Dear Wyman House. Um, as the staff report would have said, the home was built in 1872 and housed four generations of John Deere's descendants. But to build a little bit on what Dougal said, um, since being given to the foundation in 1976, he likened JA to a economic incubator and I considered Dear Wyman House and Butterworth Center as well to be service incubators for our community. Last year, we had over 185 unique reservations across our site to help support, um, nonprofit work, education, and community service. And so, supporting this landmark status not only helps recognize an important piece of our community's history, but also the history that we continue to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alexandra Elias?
Good evening, Mayor Raiapati, members of the council, Alexandra Elias representing Renew Moline. Public art is intended by its nature to be evocative and promote public discourse. I'm here today in that spirit. Renew Moline has actively supported a public art program for the last five years. In 2018, with the support of our Board of Directors, Renew requested $50,000 from the Mo, um, Moline Community Foundation. And they liked the idea so much that they gave us $65,000 for, uh, to draft a public art and placemaking plan. We immediately engaged the community leaders and established a steering committee to help us select a consulting firm. Participants on that steering committee included Dave Harrell from Visit Quad Cities, Kevin Maynard from Quad City Arts, Gabe Burnett from Azabuque African American Arts Council, and Zenaida Londeros, who was then the Greater Hispanic Chamber Director. During the spring of 2020, as we embarked on our public engagement for the public art plan, George Floyd was murdered. We watched as public art became a powerful tool to express community grief, frustration, and despair. We felt what we were doing was important. We were delighted when Mayor Raiapati and the council approved the public art and placemaking plan in August of '21 and have watched as the Public Art Commission began its work to implement the plan. The steering committee also helped us at that time to, uh, choose an artist for the windows of the Spiegel Building. That project was also a partnership with Renew paying $10,000 for the artist, managing the selection process, and the city providing the building space with public works assisting with the installation. The mural was specifically designed for those windows and that building in that location to express the importance of that place by making work, you, making use of the word possibility. I'm proud of that project, which looks as good today as it did the day it was installed. Further, the artist, Brandon Neese, a Moline native, whose African-American family stood proudly on the day it was unveiled, has gone on to other great projects. We do not feel that 5th Avenue is the right place for ready-made sculptures that are rotated among communities. The rotating sculpture program has historically placed those pieces on existing sculpture pads, which if this proposal is accepted, would remain empty. We think the sculpture pads should have sculptures on them before adding new locations. If sculptures are going to be placed along 5th Avenue, the council should determine appropriate locations and then the area should pre, be presented as an artist opportunity for, to seek an artist to express the specialness of 5th Avenue through a specific design and a cohesive planned installation, not what is available in the sculpture database. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chief? All right. Uh, we'll move to item 7, questions on the agenda. There's one update for you. The council meeting minutes from March 26th, 2024 reflect that Alderperson Castro gave an invocation. This was a Scribner's error. The minutes will be approved as amended. Okay? Thank you. Uh, if there's nothing further, we'll move to item 8.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement between the City of Moline and Quad City Towing, Inc., to provide towing services for the City of Moline. Mr. Vitas?
Yeah, very, very briefly, we were recommending approval of the, uh, agreement with Quad City Towing, Inc., who is a longstanding business, uh, partner here in Moline and has historically provided towing services, uh, based upon an RFP that did go out through the police department, uh, with numerous, in, uh, companies with interest. Uh, they are the, uh, most responsible firm that we'd like to continue to do business with.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.2, an ordinance design, designating the Dear Wyman House Carriage House and grounds as a local historic landmark site in accordance with Chapter 25, Planning and Development, Article 4, Historic Preservation of the Moline Code of Ordinances.
Your Honor, I beg your pardon?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to disclose at this time that the Dear Wyman House has had, uh, has engaged with services through my company. Um, I've not worked on the project or had any financial gain from that, but I did wanna disclose the fact. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Vitas, explanation?
Yes, very, very briefly, and, and as you know, uh, this evening Heather Calvert, uh, presented herself to, uh, speak on item 8.2, uh, and I guess the best thing I can say, long overdue. Just long overdue. What, what a great history, what a great property, what a bold statement about, you know, who Moline was, who Moline continues to be and, um, you know, it's just a pleasure to, to see this process move forward through our Historic Preservation Commission, doing what they do best, and that's landmark, writing landmark status to the Dear Wyman House Carriage House and grounds. Highly recommend approval.
Thank you. Motion to approve? Motion by Finch?
Second.
Seconded by Castro. Any discussion? The council, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 8.3, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration of the Moline Code of Ordinances by repealing Division 8, Moline Center Main Street Commission in its entirety and reserving Division 8 for future use. An amending Section 2-4100, List of Boards and Commissions by repealing subsection A 15 in its entirety and consecutively renaming the remaining subsections of section, of subsection A. An amending Section 2-4601, Commission Composition by repealing Section 2-4601 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Section 2-4601 dealing with the same subject matter. An amending Section 2-40-4604, Functions Generally by repealing Section 2-4604 in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof one new Section 2-4604 dealing with the same subject matter. Mr. Vitas or Mr. Marcy?
I'm going to actually ask Mr. Marcy to come to the podium. Uh, he has worked on this for, for some time and, uh, I know that, uh, historically there has been, uh, some duplication of effort that has gone on, uh, dating back to the time that Jeff Manis actually, uh, worked for the administrator's office and was managing, uh, SSA number six as well as the main, uh, Moline Center Main Street program. So, with that, please feel free.
Okay. Well, uh, the background on it is, um, I started as the Moline Center Program Manager January of, uh, last year. Um, I knew coming into it, there was some work to do on deciding how the program operated and, uh, more specifically, how everything related to the, uh, Moline Center Main Street program. Uh, so we've done a lot of work to, uh, jump in and, and do the work of the, of the Moline Center, uh, program during the last year, but at the same time also, uh, learn more about how Main Street programs operate, not just in the state of Illinois, but in other places. And, uh, and then specifically how it is here in Moline and then analyze, uh, how the program works. And, um, the, the way that it was set up here in Moline with the Main Street program is a little bit different than some other places in the sense that, uh, there's a big difference between, uh, the start of a Main Street program and one that's been around for 15 years or more in terms of energy and direction and those kinds of things. Um, add to that the fact that the state of Illinois actually discontinued the Main Street program in 2015. Um, there was a move away from Main Street programming, um, in a lot of communities, uh, for, for a period of time here in Moline, um, the commission stayed with the, the typical framework of the Main Street program, which would include, uh, committees and committee reports and, and having an active board. Um, what I've noticed by looking through the minutes and the other documents that I could find about the Main Street Commission during the last four or five years is, uh, there was a, a move away from, uh, the Main Street program being the driving force of what happens downtown. It was part of it, but there was this emergence of a Mo, a Moline Center program and so then there was this confusion over what's the Moline Center program, what's the Main Street Commission? And how do those, uh, work together or separately? And seemed to be a lot of ambiguity. Uh, there were no committees in the last four or five years from what I can tell. Um, it's more of an advisory board rather than an active board. And so, all things considered, um, what we tried to do is kind of define what the Moline Center program is, what it does for the downtown area and the community as a whole, with the other parts of the program. That includes the SSA boards, that includes city staff, that includes the community and the merchants. Uh, and then with that, kind of analyze where the Moline Center, um, Main Street program fits into that. And so, the recommendation we made to, uh, the Main Street Commission was, uh, to solidify the, the, the program and maybe shift some resources over to the other parts of the program, including the SSA board. And the commission voted to dissolve the Main Street Commission. So, I don't know if that brings you all the way up to speed. Um, I'm here to answer more questions, but that's kind of where we're at, is, uh, many of the, the members of the commission are also on the SSA board. And so, uh, there's nine members on that board. Uh, the functions of what we would normally do with the Main Street Commission would shift to, in other ways. We still are involved with the merchants, uh, the community, uh, the Keith Moline Beautiful Commission, the Public Art Commission. Uh, it's just, even though we're looking at taking something away, uh, from the equation, we're actually adding and building to the Moline Center program. So, it, it's just a kind of a restructuring and adding some specificity and creating an organization, uh, that has more clearly defined, um, roles and responsibilities, I guess, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion?
I wasn't sure if that was a hand up to speak, Mr. Schmidt. I guess it's not.
I wasn't sure he was there yet.
Okay. Mr. Macias?
Thank you. And I've been part of the commission for maybe less than a year. Uh, but, so there's people who've been there, uh, for a lot longer, a lot of these business owners. And they really just basically said, it's a lot of, uh, repetitiveness from the other, um, uh, the SSA boards and what that's, and it's all the same people. So, um, yeah, just during, in the short time that I was there, I just saw the efficiency and, you know, I credit you for seeing that and actually working on improving the processes as opposed to just keeping the, the workload that was there before as usual. So, that, that was just my observation during my time there.
Thank you for sharing that. Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, and, and that, my experience prior to Alderperson Macias was very similar in that it was the advisory board, but really, and it has basically no budget, right?
That's right.
The budget is all basically borrowed from the SSA's and so you're recommending to a board in which was mostly duplicative to spend the money.
Yeah, that, there, there's a budget for the operating costs associated with the Moline Center program, which includes the Main Street Commission, but the commission itself did not have its own budget. And that's one of the things we looked at is, maybe we keep the commission, but there's a budget given to it. Well, then you have to communicate to the people who are giving the money and then is that practical and efficient? And so, you know, we just thought it would make the recommendation to, uh, you know, which includes the Main Street Commission, but the commission itself did not have its own budget. And that's one of the things we looked at is maybe we keep the commission, but there's a budget given to it. Well, then you have to communicate to the people who are giving the money, and then is that practical and efficient? And so, you know, we just thought it would make the recommendation to, like I said, just kind of channel the resources another way. And we can, we can still implement, you know, committees and other things that a commission would do. But it's just, it's how, the direction we've gone in, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Go ahead.
So, no, and I, I think it makes sense. I think it sounds scarier than it is on paper when you say we're dissolving the Moline Center Commission. But what we're really doing is taking a situation where we had three boards operating and consolidating that to the two that were the most functional, while also then still focusing on maintaining the program and keeping it going. And I just think as we communicate that out, it'll just be important for us to maintain that messaging.
Absolutely.
Because I think for most outsiders understanding like what the SSA, that, that doesn't track to most people. But saying that that work is still being done in those places, I think it's just an important part of communicating. But yeah, very in favor of, of the keynote.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight point four, an ordinance amending Chapter thirty-four, Water and Sewers of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section thirty-four dash twenty-one twenty-nine, Reading Zones, Collecting Zones, Payment Dates, Penalties, Subsection C, to further adjust quarterly utility billing references as the city transition to monthly utility billing effective January twenty twenty-four. Mr. Vitas?
Very, very briefly, this is a house cleaning matter brought forward by the Finance Department and a legal city attorney. Recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point five, a resolution approving the licensing agreement for the twenty twenty-four Mercado on Fifth season scheduled for May twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, through September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, closing certain streets more particularly described here into vehicular traffic and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said event. Mr. Vitas?
STAP is recommending approval of the licensing agreement that would allow for the closure of Twelfth Street and Fifth Avenue as laid out in the agreement and as discussed at the previous meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Eight point six, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to an easement encroachment license agreement with Michael and Angie Jones for property located at sixty-one oh nine Thirty-Fourth Avenue, A Court, to allow for improvements that include the installation of a four-foot wide concrete retaining wall topped by a privacy fence. Mr. Vitas?
Well, um.
Or Mr. Lodi?
Both of us, actually. We've been working on this for some time. I, I, I'm just gonna lay it out there. I am not a strong supporter and never have been a strong supporter of allowing any encroachments in the public right-of-way or in any public utility easements because of the complications it presents for the future. This request came in, and out of respect to the property owners, we bring it forward to you as a council to deliberate and make a determination as to whether or not you believe it, it should be approved so that a swimming pool could be built, a retaining wall could be constructed, a fence placed on top of the retaining wall. And this is a drainage easement is the best way to describe it. So with that, Tony, if you want to add anything to it, you know, on the record, I'm, I'm opposed to this easement. Just lay it out there.
Yeah, so this request initially came to planning and zoning, and then they kicked it over to us to look at how our utilities would function. The, the subdivision, I believe it's Beaverwood subdivision, was built within the last twenty years or so over by Blackhawk College. And it included a utility easement slash drainage easement along the, the northern edge, which is also adjacent to the right, the Thirty-Fourth Avenue right-of-way. This easement contains a, a fire hydrant that, that comes into the easement by a few feet. The encroachment will not affect our ability to operate or maintain the fire hydrant. And our stormwater manager has also looked at this and concluded that the construction of this, these improvements wouldn't affect the drainage of the area as well. There may be some private, privately owned utilities also in this, this utility easement that the petitioner would be obligated to engage with, into a license agreement with, with those privately owned utilities as well.
Ms., uh, is it, we haven't put it on the floor yet. Do you want a motion to put it on for discussion?
Motion to approve?
Wait, sorry, Ms. Christopoulos, could you please advise how we do discussion?
Yes, if, if council would like to discuss, there should be a motion as second.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Timian. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Castro. Sir, Timian?
So I see there's a five-foot space still from that hydrant. I'm looking at the hand drawn. It's a little bit easier to consume on page seventeen. There's a five-foot space still. Do we have a, is there a code for hydrant spacing? And what is that, three feet? Okay. Second, a four-foot concrete retaining wall with a privacy fence on top, does that exceed? Or is just the four feet, the, the, the width? That's what it is, is the depth. I'm curious to know if the retaining wall plus the fence on top will exceed zoning requirements for height.
So we would have a six-foot height limitation on the fence in the front yard.
Okay, is that on top of or in, in total?
We would look at the, we would look at the grade of the lot. So if you're talking about a retaining wall that's
Oh, it's level.
Back at the average grade, then we would still just consider that a six-foot tall.
So it's off of the front of the house?
So we would look at the average grade of the lot, which I haven't had a chance to look at.
Okay, thank you.
So speaking of not having a full information for council, right? Like if we don't know that information right now, but you would like it in order to make a decision, also, wouldn't we, wouldn't it be logical to know whether the private company utilities are gonna allow an easement before the city gives up parts of the right-of-way?
Uh, that's, that's a question for our, I guess, I don't know.
You get what, so does the council understand what I'm saying is that what is the proper order of operations here?
Our agreement makes your license condition on licenses from private utilities. So, you know, somebody has to go first.
Okay, but that's still, what still remains is the detailed answer to Mr. Timian's question about any height restrictions. Correct? Any, the data on whether this plan puts them out of compliance with any height restrictions. Am I correct? Did I overhear you correctly?
Yeah, I don't, you, that's something we can certainly do, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Timian?
It's my understanding that six foot is the requirement, and any fence they put in would be capped out at that regardless of. That, that doesn't affect the easement agreement. That, this is just, I was asking about the fence on top of the wall.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I was putting them together. Any other questions from the council? Mr. Macias?
Thank you, Your Honor. What about the drainage? What kind of problems could that cause with the drainage?
The, there will, the, the drainage swale is north of the area where these improvements will be constructed.
Really wouldn't affect much?
Ms. Castro, have you heard from any of your neighbors in opposition of this at all?
Heard nothing.
Anything further? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
I am a little confused as why this was passed on with a staff, well, why was this labeled for approval with staff objection? Or was that coming from the planning and zoning commission's approval? Who, who, let me ask a simple question. Who all has seen this and signed off on this to date? And who has expressed hesitation or disapproval?
I can tell you, utilities department has seen and, and approved, planning and zoning has seen and approved.
Commission?
I don't know that this was.
Staff, okay, thank you. Is, is this not an issue for the planning and zoning commission? I'm confused as to why it's coming to us first. Yeah, I mean, my understanding, what I know about it right now is not an issue for the planning and zoning commission. It's not, there's not any kind of special approval that would be required from the planning and zoning commission. It's only because of the easement issue. Correct. Okay.
Ms., Ms. Christopoulos, did you want to add?
So I believe that when Mr. Lodi said it went to the planning commission and they referred it back to utilities and PNC, they deferred. So they had no role here.
Okay, thank you for the clarity. Anything further for the council? All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. All right, we move to our informationals. Nine point one, law enforcement grant opportunities. Chief Galt?
Thank you for the time, Your Honor. Just wanted to update the council and maybe get a little bit of consensus or direction on seeking some grants. As you know, grants are labor intensive and, and require a lot of both work on the front end and the reporting on the back end. And some of them require no cost match or involvement with the city finances and some require significant contribution. In your packet, you should have a document, was prepared by my police business analyst, who has brought this to my attention for some upcoming grant opportunities, including the first one, United States Department of Justice Law Enforcement on Health and Wellness Act. This is a twenty-four month project period with no cost match to the city. We would ask for $200,000 to support in-house internally programs that would benefit officers at the Moline Police Department, including emotional and mental health, peer monitoring, suicide prevention, and stress reduction and other police officer family services. We currently have a contract with Ten Forty-One, Inc., a wellness company to provide services. It's fairly limited in scope. It's not a very expensive contract. What we would like to do is add to that and contract a specific wellness coordinator at the police department to work on these various things, as you can see in, in that program. The second one is the United States Department of Justice CPD Micro Grant, Officer Recruitment Retention and Workforce Diversification. The mayor actually brought these to my attention, these micro grants, after one of her, actually, I think, meetings with the cops office. This is a, again, a twenty-four month project period with no cost match to the city. We would ask for $175,000 for recruitment and retention. If you recall, the city last year invested $50,000 for a marketing campaign. You know, it wasn't successful to, to some extent. It didn't produce a lot of applicants for us, but that's kind of the national narrative that we're dealing with. And so our proposal here would be to kind of enhance that with some, with a specific recruitment coordinator, referral incentive, incentives and other things, like the implementation of the Thirty by Thirty Initiative to increase police, women in the workforce. So that's some more details laid out in, in there. So those are two that are probably easy for you to say yes, because they don't require any match from the city finances. Pretty low risk, little to no risk at all. The next one that I, I'd really like you to put some thought to is the Bureau of Justice Assistance Connect and Protect Law Enforcement Behavioral Health Response Program. That is a thirty-six month program, and please note that this is a cost match. And that is an escalating match requirement of twenty percent in the first two years and forty percent in year three. As you know, in the city strategic plan, holistic health awareness is one of the goals. This isn't specifically enumerated in subsections of that, but would certainly fit in that. This is an external program that affects the community. Previously, we had things like goals, this expand the CYFS program, which Alden, Alden and Timian championed to fund that last, or this current fiscal year. I love the program, but I, I'm gonna be honest with you, it's not enough for the community, right? And so what we would propose is potentially asking for $550,000, but that requires you to commit $75,000 in year one, $75,000 in year two, and $166,000 in year three, according to their very complicated formula that we had to get guidance on. But those are the dollar match, a $236,000 match over three years. Again, what, in our contract with CYFS, they're a private company that provides limited social workers embedded in our police department. What we're finding is that we could really benefit from a dedicated full-time case manager and case coordinator, relieve some of that from the police department, be able to follow it all the way through, do a better job of that. There's, there's some HIPAA barriers that we're kind of battling a little bit with police being involved in that so we could maybe contract that with them to, I'm sorry, I did tell you the wrong number. Two hundred and thirty-six is not correct. It's three hundred and sixteen, six sixty-seven. If you, if you would have done the math, you would have recognized that I was wrong. Had a sticky note here to update that dollar amount. So, I, you know, I am concerned about the match. And, and, you know, I'm not, I don't know if I'm a hundred percent on board with it just because of the significant match in year three. But I wanted to bring it forward so you, you understand the grants that are available. This is an external grant. It would affect the community, but it's a significant investment. I mean, seventy-five, seventy-five and one sixty-six is not a small amount of money. And so we can come back and talk about those. I just want to also let you know some of the other grants. We, we have a lot of grants that we pursue. We have an annual human services, Illinois Department of Human Services to back education program that we do. We get that every year. Bulletproof Vest program every year, annual. And we're pursuing an Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority grant to, to buy a new live scan machine, which is our digital fingerprint and mugshot camera, or to upgrade that system. The Edward Byrne Memorial Justice JAG Grant, we get about sixteen to twenty thousand dollars a year supplements, equipment such as gas masks, mobile field force, and our crisis containment unit programs. With twice, we've been awarded the Homeland Security Port Security Grant. That is because we're on the waterway of Mississippi River and we're part of, of that. We do a lot of training and, and stuff like that. We received that twice. We are applying for that again. We are applying for the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System Let These Fall Alternatives Grant, which would give us some, hopefully, if, if we receive it, reimbursement for our TASER program that you fund through budget with our officers that carry TASERS. All the officers are assigned a TASER. And then we have a, a first-time grant that we're looking to partner with the school district in Moline, School District on Stop School Violence Prevention Program. And then that would probably complement with the, the bottom one there, the School Violence Prevention Program. That's a twenty-five percent match. We've gotten that before. You did authorize that in twenty twenty-one, or the council at that time did. And that's how we added cameras at all the crosswalks. So both of those programs would be a partnership with the school district and likely expand the camera programs in their parking lots and other areas on the exterior of their buildings. So look forward to your comments or questions, just looking for some direction on your preference on us pursuing any, all, or none of those grants.
Thank you. Mr. Timian, then Mr. Macias?
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few questions. First, on the, the first grant, highly supportive. I think it's great. Is there an exit, or is this, after the two-year period is over, will this just be something that we will continue to fund?
Yeah, so I think we could do one of two things, right? We could exit completely, separate it, or we could budget for anything that we've developed during that period of time, possibly reallocate, reallocate dollars. There is no long-term commitment to this. One of the things I'd like to see is the effectiveness of the program, right? Is our, you know, what are the measurables? I think, and I know that you're in a little bit of the space on, in your, your day job, but some of the problem that we have, particularly with health and wellness, both internally in the police department and externally, is the measurables. And I'm just, I don't know what those would be, and I would really like to see that before I would make any type of budgetary recommendation to continue it. And, you know, the other thing is there's always new things out there. Maybe we pivot to something new. And I think that we would really have to take a deep dive at that time.
In theory, it could be retention, job satisfaction, depression measures of, of the police force, you know, which would all be well worth the investment. And so, and then I guess for the third one, you mentioned the HIPAA issues. I'm currently in the process of HIPAA-fying our entire application, so I understand the pains. Is this something that IT is able to help with if we need to create completely separate systems?
No, yeah, so it's, it's more just an access to the information that we're not privy to, right? It's because we're partnering with a healthcare provider that, we're not healthcare providers. We do have a, a business agreement that we've, that's. that we're not healthcare providers. We do have a business agreement that the city's already entered into, but it's, and I'd have to jump into the legalese of it, but it's really that just, it's none of our business, I guess, in layman's terms.
So, all the proper safeguards will be put in?
They are in place, yeah. We really don't, the problem that we have is the follow-up. And so, not to get on my soapbox here, and the mayor will know that I'm all over this mental health problem in our community, but the problem that we have is the healthcare system is a may-do system, and the criminal justice system is a must-do system, right? We tell you, you have to do something. Well, then, when these two worlds come together, the may-do and the must-do system, it's like, well, we think you should do this, and we're not going to ask you if you're ever a client or getting counseling or doing anything, because then it's highly protected information. We have that same problem internally with police officers. It's like, hey, you know, sorry that you're having personal problems, alcoholism, divorce problems, whatever, we'd love to help. Here are the opportunities, but then, as an employer, we really can't follow up. It's like this weird, like, two things collide. So that's kind of a high-level view of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Castro?
I just had a question. I'm all in favor of the top two. For the third one, I do have a question. Do we have in the area, like Quad City area, I mean, can they support that type of system? I mean, do we have the, I mean, sometimes there's a lack of, like you said, a lack of follow-up with the health systems and things like that, so do we have a?
Should I reserve my comments?
No, I was wondering, because you, I guess you asked if, you know, if it would be something that we would want to put money to, but I mean, I think that we could and we should, but do we have the support to be able to manage that type of program?
Well, I can tell you, I think, probably in small scale, and I think that the more that we can do to provide that on a local or micro level probably is helpful. Yeah, it's no secret that I've been highly critical of the overall system in the area. And I think that we're hoping that the things that we're putting into place can make it better. But you're right, we are, I don't know what the proper word is, handcuffed to the system, right, that we don't have a lot of control over. I think some of these, so for example, a case manager and a case coordinator sometimes help things not fall through the cracks. And when, if you've ever been involved in the system, if you will, the mental health or the healthcare system, it's easy to get lost in the cracks. It's easy to get frustrated with the services. It's super confusing. It's overwhelming. And we've tried a couple of different approaches that we've spearheaded, but one of them is kind of a Mayo Health Clinic approach that we're working on with Rock Island County Probation, where we try to get everybody to the table and say, what can we, what services can help these, this individual? And what we found is that that person to kind of shepherd it through the process is more helpful to a person, a family in need, particularly when there's a juvenile involved, than any other solution that we've seen.
I would say that, first off, thank you for listening to me about the thirty by thirty program. So you know that that's something I picked up at a U.S. Conference of Mayors, heard about it, and I'm always thankful for the leadership you give to women in the force. I think that there's data that we need for that bigger one with the three-year commitment. Certainly, everything you've said about case management, I believe it. We know that that's the case. That's why the project now has a level up, because we need people to be followed through there, case managing the people in the level-up program. But data on what is a juvenile, what is the situation with our numbers of juveniles that are systems impacted right now, right? Where do we see the trend heading in Moline, in the Quad Cities, et cetera, so that we know how big of an impact investment in that area could have? Clearly, we all care about safety for everyone in the community, but when it comes to these specific issues that you're talking about, if we had a little more data on that, that might help the council.
I could just tell you anecdotally, well, first, I know I did mention juveniles. This isn't just strictly related to juveniles, so it is adult and juvenile. And I can tell you, and I know the fire chief would back me up, that it's, the data is enormous. The underlying problems that are not being addressed are enormous. The data is overwhelming. All of our run numbers, I know you've probably seen some of these. His run numbers from EMS, particularly related to mental health, are enormous. Our call volume is at the highest it's ever been. Our nine-one-one calls, not just related to this, but all are the highest they've ever been. SASSA, the Community Emergency Services Supports Act is coming forward. Probably now, if it gets pushed off the spring session until January, or July one of twenty twenty-five, is going to probably put even more burden on the fire department or EMS systems, hospital systems. We recently hosted a very large summit in the Quad Cities at Turnbull Point, with fifty-seven leaders in that space to try to get our heads around it. So the data is, anecdotally, without the actual stats given to you, are enormous.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
As we think about the behavioral health response program, I understand hesitations, and of course, we need to be looking at those numbers and having that before us. And I do understand that we're not going to be able to fix every problem in that system, but I do think it's important we continue to push and lead on that, because I think it helps residents, everyone who's here. I think it also provides that better support to our officers, to our fire personnel as well, because, like, we know that people are just going to keep coming back and needing help over and over again. And even if the system is not there, that should be picking them up, anything we can do that helps and, you know, even takes a portion of that back. I mean, certainly, we have to be mindful of the cost of it, but I think it's a way we have to pursue forward. So very supportive of that, and appreciate every step that's gone forward with that and all, and and being realistic about the challenges and that we're not going to fix everything.
If there's nothing further, I'll leave a final word, is that you mentioned the causes, the root causes, right? We talk about this a lot when it comes to what programs do we want to invest in. If these grants and matches will help us get at the root cause, then we have a fighting chance of changing the tide. But if it is throwing a Band-Aid on the situation, we're just pushing the problems farther down the road. So if we can be very careful in how we examine it, that'd be great.
I would be preaching to the choir to tell you this, but it's like a blooming onion, blooming onion, right, at Texas Roadhouses. Every time you pull one back, it's another issue. I know you and I have worked diligently on some of these issues, and it's really, it's sad how far we need to go. And I don't know that I have the answers to that, like which one you do first, or which one you attack first, because it's so layered. I just want to be transparent about that.
Yeah, thank you. All right, nine point two, Public Art Commission Request for Rotating Sculpture Program. Mr. Mathias?
Thank you. So you heard in public comment today, two comments on this project. Staff simply want to bring this to you tonight to get some direction from you before we, so we can better assist the Public Art Commission on how we move forward here. So you heard about this thirteen thousand, six hundred dollar proposal from Quad City Arts to place sculptures throughout Moline Center. One thing I want to point out, this, if we choose to, if you give staff the blessing to move forward with this, we will be bringing back a sole source approval of some kind, because QC Arts is the only thing, we're under fifteen thousand, but we do need to, per the policy, get non, or excuse me, get competitive informal quotes. So they're the only provider of this. Just a few things, I guess, to point out about, I don't, I don't feel that this proposal's contrary to our public art plan. I've looked through the plan. I do feel like staff's role in this is to support the Public Art Commission, but it is to make sure we're complying with that plan, right? I'm not going to come in and tell you what good art is, what bad art is, but I'm going to tell you if something is completely not in congruence with your plan. The second thing I'll say about it is, you know, you've got all the maps of the different locations there. We have, staff have ruled out the A locations. They don't meet the city engineer's requirements. They don't meet planning and zoning's requirements. The B locations, once we get, once we get a sculpture, because right now, we know the possible locations, okay? City engineer and myself, we're okay with those B locations. The police chief is going to want to see the actual height of those sculptures and where they go, to make sure they don't block downtown cameras. So that'll be something, as we, if we did move forward with this, we were going to have to verify each location's height and size, and we don't know, we know the sculptures that we think we're getting, that we voted on, we don't know exactly if we're going to get them yet, which locations they'll be going to. So that'd be something we would verify if you want to move forward with this. The only thing else, I guess, I'll point out is, like I said, just, we will be coming back with an actual agreement, which we don't have yet, but I would come back to you with a sole source approval and an agreement that ties those, the actual work here with Quad City Arts and those locations and sculptures. But the main thing is to get some, to get your opinion on this. If this is something that you, you want to have these certain locations on Fifth Avenue, staff will continue to support it. If you want to consider other locations, or like Alex had brought up, that we have some existing pads around downtown, I believe, one is at Mercado, one is at Kone Tower, one is at the Plaza, and then there's another one by the Channel Cat. So happy to take any direction from you. Or answer any questions.
City Council?
Those existing pads, are those empty?
Yes, they're empty right now. And so they would be, if we go through with these, those would be empty, remain empty this year.
And what is, does that cost you quoted include the installation of new pads for these new locations?
So they will just, they will attach to the sidewalk and they will be removed when they're done, so there won't need to be pad, it includes everything to install the sculptures.
And then what, who repairs the sidewalk from attaching?
So, yeah, that was one of my, I guess, my main question with this, as you look at this nice streetscape that you have, right, and it's like, okay, well, how many holes can you put in this? I did, I mean, the size of what is, didn't seem very, like, it was very damaging to see some of those, but I do think if we approve this, I think part of it should be in the agreement that there'll be some kind of epoxy or something put in those holes, something that meets the city engineer's requirements to, like, make sure those holes are safely repaired.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
I love public art. I'm going to wax eloquently for a minute about Fifth Avenue. I used to ride my bike up and down it as a kid, trying to hit the lights, so I got all greens, because it was timed, and it was really hard for, like, a ten-year-old. But it is, I heard someone recently describe it as like, it's like a Hallmark movie. It is like this really unique spot in Moline. And with that in mind, I would personally prefer Fifth Avenue be filled with art that is acquired through an RFP and is, for lack of a better term, Instagrammable. It is something that people can share and entices others to come in to do the same thing, and a rotating art program wouldn't be that. And to the point, we can't even, we might ensure that this sculpture meets requirements, but every year, we have to then check height issues again with engineering and only, and limit our selection to that. It is my personal preference that Fifth Avenue is curated art, more so rotating, and we keep the existing pads for that program. That's me personally.
And just to clarify, this is for this one year.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah, I understand objections to moving forward with Fifth Avenue. And I do think, obviously, we have that responsibility of looking at it, that long-term perspective, but I think there also is an advantage to saying, hey, we're not there yet, and this is something that can be done in the immediate opportunity that is, it's available. I think it draws more attention than just putting them back onto the same pads. I mean, there, the, I've seen people downtown engaging with the art, I mean, and it does happen, but I think this puts it in a way that is different, and it can push that out, but it also, the somewhat temporary nature of it doesn't preclude a change to how that's functioned again in the future, and kind of a return to that path, and as we look towards what may be a more permanent installations there. I kind of fall right down the middle, because I think there's, like I said, pros to both ways, but I don't think this precludes us from anything down the path, and I'm I'm inclined to follow the guidance of our appointed Public Art Commission and trust their recommendation and see what this gains us in that one year, and then we can always make that decision in the future if we need to change it.
Anyone else? Mr. Maceus?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, and I think we also have the brand-new mural on Fifth, so there's always, there's been something in place, so I think it would complement it. Well, I do like the idea, and I don't know what the conversations are with the commission, of some permanent stuff that will always be there and really truly identifies with Moline and just will be there forever, that people could come back ten years later and know there's this statue or whatnot. I really don't see a problem with something like this. I work in downtown Bettendorf, and they've had this program for a very long time, and we see the rotating art. It's, the one thing that I do know, there's some pieces that you want to keep, but then they sell them, so there is that, but it keeps it fresh. You never know what you're going to get. So, I mean, if it's just for one year, I really, you know, think it'll make a difference, complement a mural. But I would also, would be interested to see what long-term goals there are in talks about permanent fixtures.
We are talking about a long-term, a couple of long-term projects of the commission right now, so we'd be happy to share the minutes with you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from this council? You've gotten a mixture of opinions. For my part, I think we do really need to be mindful of costs to repair a beautiful streetscape and sidewalkscape that we have right now. I, that is a cost I wouldn't, that's like we're adding cost to ourselves unintentionally, and that's ridiculous, you know?
Okay. Well, we'll keep it moving forward. Like I said, this will come back to council before there's any kind of approval, for sure, so.
Thank you. All right, nine point three, April twenty twenty-four, SASSA Information Report. Mr. Vitas?
Good evening. We're finally at this point in the meeting, and I think we're all grateful, so.
You're not used to short meetings. Come on.
Yeah, I know, spoiled. It was a good, it was a good month for the city. It was a good first quarter, as you'll see when we bring our quarterly action plan forward to you, but there's a few highlights, I think, for the record, so that the public who's listening or watching on YouTube later. Power Instrument Phase One, obviously, major, major win for the city. Probably the biggest win we've had in the economic development sphere for as long as I've been here and probably long before I got here. So the groundbreaking, I believe, is the nineteenth, if I'm not mistaken, so please plan on attending.
It's this Friday.
Oh, this Friday, the twelfth, I'm sorry, the twelfth. It should be short, sweet, but it would be really great, and it is a historic moment for the city, celebrating a company that's, you know, almost as old as the city. So really wonderful news. On a simple, simple process, but a complicated process, and one that haunts every city, records disposal. I want to compliment this clerk, and I'm going to call her out, because she, you know, I told her when we were interviewing her and hiring her, I go, records management, records management is the important thing, right, because the clerk's office is one hundred percent responsible for all city records. Just as simple as that. And she took the bull by the horn, she ran with it, she's worked with the departments, she's worked with the state. She actually got the state to respond and do things that I haven't seen them do prior to her being here, so I know what she did, maybe bent an arm or so. But we're ready to start disposing of old records, and my compliments to our new city clerk on getting that done. And we will continue to move forward with disposal of records and looking at ways to digitize records in the future, so that that way we don't have volumes of paperwork as we do in the basement of City Hall. I want to compliment the HR department as well. They're busy over there. There's a lot going on, and I think they oftentimes don't get recognized for what they do, but they did manage to bring on a new HR manager, who is sitting here this evening, to the left of Liam Miller, Brandon Tidwell. Welcome, Brandon. Great to have you on board. And we're looking forward to some great training programs coming out of HR for all employees. It's really, really important, not only for retention, but for attraction. And then last but not least, just kind of a point, pointing out that the folks at IDOT did tentatively approve a permit for the skate park, should the city decide to go forward with that project and find the appropriate funding sources, as for all projects on the riverfront. So bringing that forward, and when I say skate park, I mean skate park slash pump track, right? We just kind of shortened it to skate park, but it does mean both. So with that, if you have So with that, if you have questions, wonderful. I know I do get some emails occasionally from you as you see the report, and here we go.
Mr. Timmy.
Does the skate park pump track permit have an expiration?
I do not recall seeing an expiration on it. Uh, what I do recall seeing is, is that in order to go forward now, uh, we would move to a, an appropriate design. So they've already accepted the preliminary conceptual work that was done by New World.
Event, what?
New Lines.
New line skating, thank you. So, so conceptually, they're in agreement. So now what would happen is, is we would have to develop those plans, bring them forward, and they would have the final say on, on whether those plans meet with their expectations. And it's basically maintenance-related and accessibility for maintenance to the, you know, to the superstructure of the bridge itself. So, um, that being said, it's really great. So hoping to move forward with that as we wrap up our plans and our discussions with M K S K this summer. So all good things. Yours, yours in the making.
Anybody else? Questions? I want to compliment H R as well. Congrats on being a part of this I C M A internship presentation. I'm really excited that, that internship program we've worked on continues to move forward. That's wonderful. So it pairs nicely with what Dougal was talking about in terms of showing kids opportunity here in Moline. I'm happy to see there's positive movement on McManus Pub. Good lord.
Save the sign.
And happy to see, um, that, actually, I wrote down, I love seeing in, I think it's the clerk's area or legal area, the weekly ordinance and resolution review, so that we don't miss things, things don't get, fall through the cracks or not get filed and things like that. That's awesome. I did want to note, they, they wrote in one of those sections, uh, that we're, we are basically reporting the infractions toward code, especially with, um, things that I'm involved with as liquor commissioner. If you all would like a summary, I'm, I'm happy to work with them to write a memo on like what, who we've held accountable this year. I can tell you right now, uh, have denied a license, and that appeal went to the state, and we won. Have shut down a place that was operating without a food or a liquor, a tobacco license. And, and, and worked with Chief and his, um, uh, staff to make sure we're addressing safety issues, et cetera. So I, I'm happy to share any details if you need it, but since I don't report on that directly myself all the time, I wanted to see that they did address that a little bit in the monthly report, um, and there are details if you'd like it. I also just wanted to make a note for you all, um, related to Morgan Park. I got a heads up, um, from folks who were upset at the neighborhood meeting regarding information and what that was supposed to look like and stuff like that, so I'm anticipating the first ward meeting. We'll have some of those folks, um, speaking to us. I would really like to know more details about what those concerns were specifically. So I know going into a first ward meeting and, and Alderperson Murphy knows, um, what answers we've gotten before we show up there.
I will have the city engineer provide that information to you.
Yep.
Because it was limited to very specific area, very specific individuals.
Got it.
But not overall throughout the entire project area.
Okay. And that's all I have on that. Yes.
And, and actually, I had the same question for the city engineer, and he called me and explained, which is, uh, one resident that actually had reached out to me early on, and they're looking at a better solution now. It affects the second ward too. That's where we, we both split that, so.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anything further on that item? Hearing none, we move to Moline Fire Department, finally, Chief.
Come on up, Chief.
Chief Fire Officer designation, Fire Chief Steve Reaganweather.
Now I get to say it. That's good. So anyhow, let me, let me just read to you from the Center for Public Safety Excellence, the news release dated April the fourth. And it reads as follows, "Moline Fire Chief Completes International Professional Designation Process." Moline Fire Chief Stephen G. Reaganweather has successfully completed the process that awards the professional designation of Chief Fire Officer, CFO. The Commission on Professional Credentialing met on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four to confer the designation. Chief Reaganweather becomes one of only one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine chief fire officials worldwide, and the first chief fire official designated for the city of Moline. Think about how long we've been around. He's the first, so congratulations on being number one. The designation program is a voluntary program designed to recognize individuals who demonstrate their excellence in seven measured components, including experience, education, professional development, professional contributions, association membership, community involvement, and technical competence. In addition, all applicants are required to identify a future professional development plan. The CFO designation program uses a comprehensive peer review model to evaluate candidates seeking the credential. The Commission on Professional Credentialing awards the designation only after an individual successfully meets all the organization's stringent criteria. Achieving this designation signifies Chief Reaganweather's career commitment to the fire and emergency services. The designation is valid for three years, and in maintaining that designation requires the fire chief to show continued growth in areas of professional development, professional contributions, active association membership, and community involvement, as well as to adhere to a strict code of professional conduct. Congratulations, and he's wearing a pin, so congratulations.
As I said this morning, I'm, I'm just glad that folks speaking wasn't one of the criteria, so. No, thank you, uh, Bob, for, uh, that, uh, those kind words and the recognition. And, um, achieving something like this is made a lot easier with, with working for a council like you. Achievements, um, you know, are, are viewed, and those aren't possible if I don't have the support, uh, from you, so thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, I will close out our committee of the whole and call our regular council meeting to order. Uh, pledge allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the five, United States of America, a general republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, is there an invocation, Mr. Schmidt?
Nope.
Uh, roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy.
Present.
Macias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Finch.
Present.
McNeil. Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request the approval of Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Meeting Minutes of March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, as presented. Council Meeting Minutes of March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, as amended. Appointments made during Committee of the Whole on April nine, twenty twenty-four, and consent agenda items fifteen point one and sixteen point one through sixteen point five inclusively.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Macias. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Item eighteen point one, a resolution declaring the property at four six two five Avenue of the Cities, Moline, as surplus immediately upon acquisition of same in early May twenty twenty-four, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to an agreement for sale of real estate and do all things necessary to convey the future city-owned property at forty-six twenty-five Avenue of the Cities, Moline, to Joel J. Knox and/or his assignees.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Timian, seconded by Castro. Uh, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes.
Item number eighteen point two, a resolution approving the licensing agreement for the twenty twenty-four Mercado on Fifth season, scheduled for May twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, through September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four, closing certain streets, more particularly described herein to vehicular traffic, and authorizing the use of public right-of-way in conjunction with said events.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Castro, seconded by Finch. Uh, discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
All right. Uh, well, it's good to be with you again. Um, thank you again to Alderperson Razak for leading the last meeting of March. Um, we certainly have a lot of things going on. Staff is working diligently on all sorts of things, especially any, uh, some of the new, um, strategic objectives from our strategic plan. I, uh, did want to, to just note publicly the letter that I've passed out to you that was mailed on April first to Unity Point Health. I, I want you to know, as Chief said, we have been talking, including Alderperson Timian and a working group on mental health issues. We have been talking for over a year about possible solutions. Everything from, um, the input side when it comes to practitioners who work in this field to, to bump up that, the number of those working here in the Cod Cities, to economic development, do we need more competition, um, uh, in terms of providers in the area? But I think we've reached a point where I couldn't stay silent anymore. I want you to know what I've said, and I want you to know that I'm following up. Um, I do have a meeting at the request of Unity Point about something else, scheduled next Friday, the nineteenth, but I will for sure be bringing this up with their regional representative. And I do, if you can indulge me, please, I'm going to read this out loud for the public record. This is to Dr. Toyosi Olutade, Chief Medical Director, Dan Sterner, Emergency Director, Dennis Duke, President of Robert Young Center. Hospital system plays an important role in our community health, communities' healthcare. We expect hospitals to provide primary and trauma services and care for the indigent. Our hospitals are a vital component to maintaining the healthcare safety net. I've worked closely with Chief Darren Galt at our police department to understand the challenges and community needs when it comes to addressing the mental health crisis. It has come to my attention over the past few years that the services for emergency mental health treatment are not meeting our expectations. Our community deserves better emergency treatment for mental health care. In fact, the State of Illinois Legislature has made it clear that they expect patients experiencing mental health crises to receive equivalent care to those experiencing physical emergencies. In April twenty twenty-one, a forty-four-year-old male was displaying psychotic behavior and was transported to Unity Point Emergency Department and was never treated. He walked out of the emergency room lobby. Two days later, the Moline Police Department was faced with a situation with this same individual where they almost had to use deadly force. In May twenty twenty-two, a twenty-three-year-old male was transported to Unity Point Emergency Department for mental health and drug treatment. The patient was transported by ambulance. The patient left the hospital within ten minutes. He was found dead in the Unity Point employee parking lot a few hours later. In December twenty twenty-three, a twenty-three-year-old male was homicidal and suicidal and transported to Unity Point Emergency Department for evaluation. The emergency room staff refused to treat the patient and told the Moline Police Department to just take the subject to jail. In June twenty twenty-three, a forty-year-old female was displaying psychotic behavior. The Moline Police Department contacted the CARES line, and a mobile crisis team was dispatched. The mobile crisis team obtained authorization from a psychiatrist to commit the female, and she was transported to Unity Point Emergency Department for treatment by ambulance, but was placed in the lobby by the hospital. Within a few hours, the female had left the lobby and was never treated. She continues to have regular contact with the police department with obvious untreated mental health issues. In February twenty twenty-four, a twenty-six-year-old male was suicidal and transported to Unity Point Emergency Department for evaluation. Within two hours, the male left the emergency room and was walking around Rock Island in freezing temperatures, still suicidal. The City of Moline has invested in programs to improve response to mental health crisis. We have entered into a partnership with the Center for Youth and Family Solutions to have social workers embedded with our police department. We have provided funding to the police department each of the last two years to increase or expand our social work programs. We have increased funding for training for our police department, including scenario-based training. We are evaluating the need for increased EMS services in our fire department to address the increased call volume, largely revolving around the drug and mental health crisis. Now it is time for the hospital to do its part. All of this will be for naught if the public hospital system does not improve our, their mental health emergency treatment. As you can see just from these few examples above, our police and ambulance services are taking patients for treatment, but in these cases, the system failed. I would like to meet with hospital executives to determine how the hospital intends to improve its response to mental health crises. Our citizens have no other choice but to seek Unity Point services for mental health care. I do understand the significant economic pressures that health systems face. This reality, however, should not determine the care with which your hospital staff treat human beings. Our region is not ripe with options, and our hospital system is set up for Rock Island to be the primary entry point for Moline citizens to seek such care. It is imperative that our community can rely on your local hospital system to maintain the healthcare safety net. So that is the extent of the communication at this point. You know, Illinois municipal, um, code tells mayors they're responsible for the health, safety, and welfare of their community, and that's the spirit in which I, I wrote that letter. So there'll be more follow-up, I'm sure, but thank you for listening through that and having it in your possession so you know the common language that, uh, and, and issues that Chief and I are talking about. Any questions? Comments? All right.
This is something very unfortunate. This needs to be addressed with care.
One of the issues, um, that I don't know if you're aware, but they're currently staffing emergency rooms with, um, a high percentage of visiting, um, doctors and nurses. I've experienced that even with my own elderly family member, um, lack of care, being sent home with, uh, pain medication with no instructions on it or in her possession. So this, this not unique, I probably to just that particular hospital, but, um, an issue we have just simply because it's the labor market and the economics of hospital care are, um, increasingly difficult. So, Ms. Murphy, do you have anything?
No.
No, Your Honor. No, Your Honor.
Mr. Timian.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the pleasure yesterday of, uh, talking to some Public Works employees as they were working on sidewalks in my neighborhood. And every single time I talked to them, I learned something new about concrete or road construction, and it's just, it's a great time. So I wanted to thank them for all the work they're doing. It's, it's, I've had a plenty of residents comment on it, and everyone's really excited about it. It's, it's long overdue, and it's well, uh, well-deserved for the community to, uh, receive a little bit of attention, so thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor. Mr. Schmidt. All right. Mr. Vitas.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. I took up everyone's time. Don't, tomorrow, also, by the way, there is an infrastructure, like, all-day workshop? No, not tomorrow, Thursday.
Thursday.
Where every city is giving, um, former secretary Ray LaHood.
Ray LaHood.
Uh, a key to the city, it's as a portion of the event, so just so you know, we'll be represented at that. And then how many people are able to come to the par instrument groundbreaking? What's the number again?
Couple of us.
It's on Friday. I don't remember what time. Okay. We'll have a good pre-.
I can resend the invitation as a reminder tomorrow if you'd like.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'm going to send.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment this evening?
No.
Okay. Um, I believe we have executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisition dash five, I L C S one twenty slash two, C five.
Second.
All right, motion by Murphy, seconded by Timian. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Schmidt.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Razak.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Castro.
All right, we are in closed session.